For those of you that don't know me, my name is Maria Spear. My husband and I own the commercial bank building here in town and we also own two rented properties within the city limits of Good Thunder. Before I give my opinion on those kinds of how I feel about the city taking over the school here, I want everyone to know upfront that I am a huge supporter of economic development, bringing businesses to our town and having job development, it should be a priority for the city of Good Thunder. We're a small town, it's a big building. I have my building available for rent, the whole lower level. Many of you probably are familiar with it when you do a survey. Had it available for rent since the beginning of the year and have had very, very few hits. Businesses wanting to come, it's located on Main Street, in an excellent visible area, it's very heavy traffic. So, I will start with what I feel the pros of ownership of the city would be. As I stated, the opportunity for small business growth. If the city had a list of people that wanted to come in here and open small businesses, that's great. It'd be a potential for having a community center for our town, which is another great addition. Having a pool service kitchen. That is in excellent shape if we could get somebody in here that would commit to renting that out to bring income, that would be great. And also, for the city, if they were to become the owners of the building, if they just tried and tried and tried and didn't get small businesses to come here or whatnot, at least then maybe the the building could be torn down and this land could be developed with more homes, which we need as well for our city to start. The cons, now again, this is my opinion, and so take it as it is. The city is tax exempt, so if the city owns this building, they don't collect any taxes on it. If a private owner comes in and purchases the building, that business or that individual will be required to pay property taxes, just like all of us homeowners do and business owners do, of the value of the building. So that income would be, in my opinion, a benefit for the city because it's an increase in tax revenue. My question to the council is, the cost of utilities to maintain a building this size? My husband and I looked into possibly purchasing the building. When we heard that the referendum passed, the school sent me some information and just the utilities alone, from what I received, I'd have received 2021 and 22, but from 2019 was just a little over ninety thousand a year for the utilities on the building. Has the city found out what it would cost to put liability insurance on property this size? Maintenance costs, roofs, windows, plumbing, electrical, exterior foundation issues, snow removal, lawn care. This is all stuff the city has to take into consideration because it's going to cost money. It was mentioned at the city council meeting last week that we would have to have volunteers, if the city owned the building, we would have to have volunteers donate their time to come and supervise if we open up this gym to the public. And that means people are going to have to show up, they're going to have to stay here, you're going to be responsible for what takes place in here, you're going to have to unlock the building, you're going to have to re-lock it up. And my concern with that is, if any liability would then fall back on the city if they own the building. I'm curious how many people would be willing to donate their time to come up here and be truly committed to being here for open gym and supervise other people's children. Personally, that's not something I would be interested in because I would not want to be responsible for what takes place if there's an injury or, or anything else, but again, that's my first thought. Cost of hiring a man here? To manage, if they, if they rent out space at the community center, who's going to manage it? Now, Tom Frelick did bring up at the last council meeting that again, citizens would have to offer to come up here and donate their time to oversee the place, so that the city wouldn't have to hire a man. Cleaning staff, who's going to clean a building this size? I highly doubt anybody's going to do it for free. Cost of security equipment or staffing for security? Today's society, security is a huge issue and we are going to need either outdoor cameras all over the place, indoor cameras, or we're going to have to have security staff up here, in my opinion. If we take it over and this becomes a community center where people can rent out for wedding receptions or birthday parties or whatever, there is not adequate public parking here right now. The teachers have always had to either park on the street, down the hill, in the back. It has been mentioned that they could tear the playground out and make that into a parking facility? Has anybody got a price on what it's going to cost to put a parking lot over here? Asphalt is not cheap. So my question for the city is, do you have all these expenditures? Have you looked outside to find out what it's going to cost? Your security, cleaning, utilities, maintenance? I guess I would like to know, with what I received personally from the school district, with the utilities being just over ninety thousand a year, even if we cut that in half and said, okay, we closed down half the school, but the other half we're going to keep open, let's bring utilities down to fifty thousand a year. The city would have to have a inherent rental income of over four thousand dollars a month just to cover the utilities on the building. That's not the insurance, the upkeep, anything else. Thing I'd like to stress the most before I end here is, oh, one other thing I want to bring up is the city had the building in second for assistance. If there is a justice in here and we start doing remodels and whatnot, that's going to be an issue. Jimmy, you would probably know more about that, that you're in contracting. Has anybody looked into a justice? I guess that's all I have. Does anybody have a question for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I've given out points, a lot of. Someone else?
Well, tonight is a night to voice your oral opinions, I will say, for our town. We haven't made up a decision one way or another. It's just the input of your citizens. See where we're going.
Hi, I'm Jay Wickers, I live in North Ditch Town and through the whole process, I know that sometimes I've been to a lot of the city councils when I've seen there's been information or whatever concerning the school because that's anybody that probably attended those meetings, I'm kind of an opponent of the city taking over the school just because of the potential downfall as far as cost. And I guess before any decisions can be made, even with a group like this, I know Maureen made some really good points as far to pros and some cons and the thing that I'd like to see is some things in black and white, not any sort of projections as far as I mean, even Maureen had a couple of figures there or whatever, but I mean, I think she brought up a lot of good points that you have answered as far as potential costs, potential liabilities, risks and things like that. Because all that's going to have a great bearing on all of our facts and everything else and we divide fifty thousand dollars up amongst the citizenry of Good Thunder. You know, it's going to be a pretty good chunk, something you're going to have to come up with. If we don't have renters in here for four thousand dollars a month plus whatever it might be on top of that, so I guess, I know through the process, they talked in different meetings about having another servant that would go out to citizens and, and hopefully have some of those figures and stuff like that, so a person can make an informed decision one way or another. And then, and then go to work or kind of lay it out because I mean, if you throw it out and say, hey, you think this is that I could buy the school for a dollar, everybody's going to say that. But if you tell them another thing, it's going to cost you an extra thousand dollars or five hundred dollars a year in property they might say, oh boy, that's not what I want. So until, I'd say that there's really no need to, hey, no way that's not a big deal. Because, you know, we can't really, right now, I look at it and say, hey, you know, really what are we doing? So that's like, that's what I got. If anybody has any questions, you may even.
That's what we need here, to answer everybody. Again, this is a very big decision, you know, believe, and nobody up there made their mind that most of it. That's why I'm really having this information to be in touch. Everybody's got to be in touch. Oh, Kelly, you're not dropping the Good Thunder, have a right to speak to you, but I mean, that's a former mayor, I'm sure. You dealt with this in front of Sam with his school. You have a good conversation, maybe, I'll share it. Really? Anybody else, please?
My name's John Brevin. Been in Good Thunder now a little bit, three years. I did drop off a letter to the city office last week to, to council. I'm with the, pretty much with the same consent as people last year, and you made some very good points too. Walking through the building, I primarily looked up and there's a lot of ceiling tiles that are stained, does that mean this building is ruined? Building of this size, you're going to be looking three, four, probably more, a hundred thousand dollars just to re-look the building. Big expense. I'm thankful for the information on utility costs, another question I had. In the old part, going down to, I think what Ron said was the old library before this subdivision was built, there is cracking along the wall, certain structural problems with the older part of the building. And then it's more to, if the city were to buy this, who is going to maintain the building? Are we going, is the city going to have to hire new employees? Who's going to be responsible for the day-to-day maintenance and then if we, if it were to lease out these portions or whatever, who's going to do that work? And unfortunately, that's not work that you can rely on volunteers, you're we're sitting next to a public for failure to do that. And then also, if we were to lease obtained and then lease portions of the building, what kind of renovation costs? City going to have to put forward to that? And then there are many, many more questions, I think, that we're not thinking of that need to be considered. And I agree, before any decision needs to be made, I think there needs to be some end of paper on what, what dollar cost could be expected if the city were to take it over. I think, maybe. Someone else?
How about this question, if, if we bought the name in the park, would this, we could get a, a lifetime lease for a dollar or whatever it may be, is that something that would interest the city, citizens would come to that? Or should we have no part of any? Did we get any of that? Sorry, I forgot about this. If we could find an individual that would want to take the school, we could get a lifetime lease for a dollar or whatever it may be, is that something that would interest the city? Citizens would come to that? Or should we have no part of any? I think what Robert is asking is, do you want a community center? I mean, if, as Robert asked the question, if we could partner with someone who had owned the building, not the city, and we release a portion, whether it's the gym, kitchen, or whatever it is, would this, would it, because there would be a cost to that too, no matter what? Is, is that something the community wants?
I'm Paul Barnard, I own a couple lots in the city, I'm going to answer your question, Tom. If that was the case, I would just rent this building from somebody that owned it. I don't think the city needs to be involved in this school whatsoever. I don't think there's too much expense involved in owning a school by the city. At the end of the day, let a private party buy the school at the community center, if that may be, and rent the community center if it's available from the owners of the property. Yeah, you look like you have a question for me.
I just, I just want to understand, sure. What you're saying is that the city would not need to be, at least, wouldn't need to lease anything like that? The individual people would do that with awareness? Did I hear that right?
And then a question I have, how much of this building is on, is owned by the school district? Because I know to the south and to the west, some of that isn't owned by the city or the school district. Owned by Jane Peterson, correct?
Now you're talking about the woods?
Yeah, we're talking.
The city owns a portion of the woods.
Right, but doesn't Jane Peterson still own portions of the south?
Yeah, the other side.
Okay, yeah. I just want people to be aware that whoever buys this is not getting everything.
Right.
The building is not owned or handled by Mary Allen?
Mary, can you go up there and just figure, I don't know if you could all hear it or not?
Well, I think I agree with your question. My understanding was this school land was donated by a family way back when, still owns the land, but the school was built on it with their autonomy. Does the school district own the land underneath this building or does Mary Allen Peterson trust own this land? All the people you know, I think it's the school board, is this so big? Do you know Dan? All, all we can say is that they are selling. The school district is selling. It's listed on, it's listed with a real deal, as you speak. My dad was on the school board for this district for only twelve years. The understanding I had from him talking about it a few years ago was, school district does not own the land. And someone that's got to be a teacher or whatever that specifies, who actually owns the land? I'm sorry, but that was what my dad believed many years ago when he was on the school board and probably the best historian I've ever done, he thinks it was. But honestly, that's the first thing that had you found out is, if they sell it, can it even go through?
So this one, they actually were wrong on the contrary?
Yes. That my understanding was, is that family donated this land to be used by the school district, but the school district did not buy the land on it. Sorry, I'm just going off what my dad said and so I mean, no matter what happens, the first thing you have to find out is, do you even buy or sell it? Or does it go, if the building tore down, does it go back to the Peterson family? My understanding was that it was a trust, how did you drive it? So I, I, you know, I can't give you specifics, other than what my dad had told me at one point.
You have had a research app on your list of it at all, do you know, or? Does anybody have it?
So, part of it, that's maybe included some of the time.
I'm assuming you'd have to do a title search?
A lot of that. There's no history on the work of salary decisions that they took over, but that's not just happened.
Yeah. Let's go back to what you had.
Oh, please, the mic.
Hey, you're okay. Are you, I mean, the old one, you're waiting for me? Yep.
But I just to point, Grant, this was sold, is the land underneath it free and clear to someone's building, right?
I, like I said, I'm just going off what my dad.
If you have a problem, I should be looking for games or a camera.
Grant's question is the same one that I had asked last year. And then we had also been told that's possible, if this little building gets tore down, we lose that tax credit, so it will cost the city taxpayers more, also because we don't have the building. This is all stuff that was back last year and nobody's checked out. I think we need it. We have people that are already wanting to rent the space. We've had mention of a daycare being included, sorry, Lisa Palm, I lived here thirty some years. There are people willing to rent stuff out if we can work with a developer. We have had another developer here one time and he was pretty much shot down. We do have another developer here tonight. I think it's possible to work with somebody, but what Grant has said is something that we do have to find out first. Can we even have the building and the land that it sits on? In order to do that, because the building has to be made. Are our taxes going to go up if the building goes down?
Good point.
Thank you. Scott Stoll. Back when this was, the building was getting built, I remember, and I think it was on city council then, and the school board, whatever, had to go through a bunch of paperwork to get that land back. Do you remember, Ron?
Ron, use your mic.
But somewhere in the school district should have paid. How many years has this school been in? Twenty-eight, thirty?
I'd say the original school was, the property, I'm not saying it belonged to Peterson family, right? It was a Hall family and then one of the halls married Peterson, Peterson really did, married into that family. Now whether they owned that at that time, I couldn't say. I mean, that's, I mean, we're talking back to the eighteen hundreds.
Well, I grew up in this town, you remember that little alley that went to the school and the old pin shed? Supposedly, he owned up there and kids always played back there. But when the school got rebuilt, this went back a lot and somehow they had to do a bunch of paperwork. So I'm assuming, I don't know if he donated it or what.
Yeah, I don't, that did Mary Allen.
We'd have to find the paperwork. But who knows where it is?
It should be in public record. The title to the property, abstracts, all sorts of things, you buy a house, all that available, any property should pack that. No, it's not in the school, or they do this, you know them. I mean, that should be a county.
These are all things that would have to be all ironed out, you know, for the school to sell it before anybody could take it over, you know? There's been issues raised here tonight that need to be ironed out, everybody's. Again, I guess we're, we want input from everybody. A lot of people here tonight, please stand up and give us your views.
You have a contract here.
You want to address the crowd? My drummer from Mantecano, drummer construction, their business, we do houses in Mantecano. I got a phone call about this property. I have employees that live in town, and so I knew about it, came out, suspected it ahead of time. You got a fabulous building here, I have all kinds of ideas, the time rack, what you're saying. Small towns like this need housing, you need rental housing, you can do the full life cycle housing, just keep your young people here. The school buildings, the classrooms themselves, the water, the sewer is your biggest problem. It's got high availability of water and sewer. It would be a quick, easy remodel, it's a furnace, through one, two and three, efficiency apartments, two and two bedroom apartments for fifteen classrooms. The gym here, the garden, the well step up panel, it would be a crime chain to attempt to take this down. There's a shortage to Mantecano for all winter sports. Basketball teams from the youth, they're actually renting the Lake Crystal Rec Center, you have a pre pre-established event center here. You could rent the gym space out for volleyball, for practice, you could rent the space out, you can own it, rent the space out for volleyball. You can do summer camps here. Parking issue that we looked at, we already addressed, the playground equipment, they get moved over closer to what was the apartment building on the other side, actually back against the woods. There's a spot there for that and connect parking stalls here. Actually, I'm in the catering business also, it's all of our other businesses. Catering, wedding is a big deal. Instead of funerals now, you have celebrations of life, this kitchen, which is unbelievably advanced for a catering business, there's cater foodies, you would, they will have weddings, I was telling the some of the councilmen in Banff, this, at Saint Peter Arborette, on one sixty-nine, rents for sixty-five hundred dollars per wedding. You couldn't get that here, but you're looking at a couple thousand per wedding for sure. The weddings, celebrations of life, birthday parties, like you said, it's for generating income. The kitchen is, again, usable for that, that business is in town, that would probably love to cater to this facility. I think you would draw, you would draw people here that would commute to Mantecano for their jobs. I do affordable housing in multiple different cities. Our property is in the lake, a hundred percent full, a hundred percent time, so it's in Peter, a lot of those people are commuting. I think that you could turn this project into a nice bedroom community slash thing for people that are going to Mantecano for jobs. It's going to be, bring people to the gas stations, into your restaurants, et cetera. And the other thing that I think can be important in a small town, a hundred percent. And the other thing that I think can be important in a small town, a hundred percent clear, so I've got a lot of experience with that, is you need to keep some of the cleaners, you're calling, people that just graduated from school who live here. You need to be able to find affordable rental stuff to them, so they stay in the community, maybe in the community versus graduating from high school and the first thing to do is move on. So my opinion of a guy that's had a development business for three decades is you've got great practice here. I would love to partner with you guys in terms of special pay account. So if you got any questions, I'll happily answer.
Brad Winter, I guess my question to you is, like, what are you looking for from the city? You just want the city to buy the property? The renovation cost, everything like that, management? What, what are you looking for, I guess?
Well, this is, is actually pretty, again, we've got experiences and everything trying to do here, so all of that stuff we're talking about is predetermined. My understanding is, is being offered the city, the city that would offer it, would have potentially offered to me, and we would develop some type of a partnership. Some type of a partnership that can put the communities under here, put, uh, community amenities under here. Number, private portion would be the permanent, looking for for dollars in the city?
So with the city involvement, does that make the building and property not still tax exempted, or you want to?
No, it would not make the building tax exempted. If you go to the Beacon site, it appears that this portion of the property are actually standing on, was owned by independent school district number, helping out here, seventy, seventy-nine. It looks like when they built this gym, the edge of the gym is on another piece of property. That piece of property, that piece of property owned by Maple River School District, Department of Beacon. And then the Peterson property on the city property is three acres away. It is the public records, it's also on a site called Beacon Schneider, if you look it up on. So it is over there. Two separate entities, one being independent school district, probably the Amboy Goodfellas School District, they run away.
I guess the one last question I got is, if this is such a great deal and you think there's so much residential, why don't you go to the, to call that guy on the rail report or just buy yourself and be done? Like, why involve the city? Because, I mean, there has to be some reason to me, hey, I think it'd be great for the city to be involved, but if it's that good, I mean, if it was me, I'd just go buy it myself. All we need is people at all, you know?
You want to take a shot at that one?
I can take a shot at that. He's gonna stay at four hundred thousand dollars. And that, all that money can go where? To develop?
Well, first of all, time, I personally believe that this level is all for four hundred thousand dollars. For every reason that people listed off. It's a, it's a money pick, as it's said. It has to be someone that's been in the development business that understands rehabilitation. My track record is to be able for rehabilitation, if I bought the shop building and were turning it into restaurant, I paid with compensation. I brought the brown painting building to the seat yet, and we're renovating that and turning it into multiple different buildings, including daycare and a mental health one. So this is what we do do it for a living. The way the city partnership works is it, uh, saves it, front end load of expenses that are school district expenses. But there's no way that nobody will throw for four hundred thousand dollars. You've listed the carrying costs of ninety thousand dollars a year for just utilities. In my opinion. Uh, open market, so I think it can be affordable, because you're not gonna draw the same dollar amount that you do in Mantecano. I just opened the apartment building, it's nearby next to the Walzone. We're getting for a one bedroom, we're getting twelve hundred, twelve hundred additional months. You can't get that up here. We have to do stuff that's affordable, which doesn't mean low income, it means maybe a one bedroom at six hundred dollars, and maybe a two bedroom at eight hundred dollars. So you're two thirds the price. But again, the fact that the structure's here is what allows us to do that. You were built new, it'd have to be twelve hundred. It's no cheaper to build a good one than it is to build in Mantecano or Saint Peter or the Twin Cities. What's cheaper here, more affordable here is you actually have a structure that I walked through and, uh, if I had went and found the sewer lines and everything like I found in that, it'd be a different story. This is, this is a classic, classic remodel example, which you can do fairly cheap. You would, you would do it in dustmell style. You wouldn't be using a lot of sheet rock and other stuff. You can use a wall with this now. Uh, maybe solid conduit, which is actually quite popular now, et cetera. Uh, probably installing P-Tech units, like you see in, in hotel rooms where the heating and cooling come out of the unit. Now that's a, that's another good use, rather than try running duck work, say it's money, just each individual unit is heated and cooled by just exactly the same things you've ever seen in a hotel. Things like that, you know, the, the, upon inspection, the windows look good, that's great, it looks sustainable. Uh, as far as the holes in the roof, yeah, there's some water there. But it's not massive, so it's patchy, it's repairable, there's, there's not a bunch of new dramatic stuff. It's just tender loving care on your own building. That's the other thing that will happen, longer buildings are empty, the more rabid the charity is. Well, so the residential tax rate typically is one and a half percent of value, the commercial tax rate is usually three percent of value, average is. You're looking at probably a whole portion of eight hundred to a million dollar value. I don't have an opinion yet, again, this is for you. But I'll tell you that I already knew the tell if you were eight hundred dollars after the rent, this is the value of it. Just fifteen apartment buildings would be about a million bucks, so it's fifty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. What's that?
And what you're saying, you believe the one we signed over all the time, not even the losing other, all that?
Of, of the apartment buildings, yes. Again, the freshness of this is having the conversation of all the event center kitchen and potential office states right up front.
And like a random union, you know, like?
Take this with a sense of humility, nor would anyone. But, no, we would run the apartment building, manage the apartment building throughout the city. The grounds, everything like that, is what we do for a living.
Would you not have spoken to the buyer?
Actually, we've got an amendment here to be actually factored, like the tenants. And the community uses this as a gym space slash, you know, workout space slash, there's a couple of other things, so. Yes, there's that potential, the dividing line is right there. Basically, it's a few feet beyond that door. Yeah, this building is the other thing. I coach youth sports, I run through all the youth sports programs. This is, this is extremely high rentable space, it was, like, how?
Mike, if you looked at the properties outside, basically you probably only get about six households on you, can you? If you tore this, if this was removed and tore it down, city got your lots or whatever, you could probably get about six homes.
You, about seventy-five foot of projects, a lot, something like that would be. Is that three hundred, six hundred feet, five hundred feet? Seventy-five feet lots, but. To tear this down and go to housing with what we're facing in the country right now, it'd be very, really, really tough sell. It doesn't cost any less money to build a little bit under there, it doesn't make pay or maybe even more with transport costs, material. Housing market is plunged because interest rates like a two point seven five, a six percent right now, so you're gonna, we're gonna have to ride the storm out like we did in two thousand eight. I don't have an answer as to when the housing market would come back. I'll guarantee it will come back slowest in small towns.
Well, I was thinking, you know, if you tore it down, you sold six lots and made a average of twenty-five hundred dollars a year taxes. You're talking, if this building is the way it is right now, plus you have a community center. If you tore it down, you'd be making a little bit less money on the top of the taxes, household, then you wouldn't have no chance for the community center at all.
Correct, but you also gotta consider too the demolition costs, so. The building does, again, I do demolition work, so I'm very familiar with age and stuff. I'll guarantee you, the line going into the old buildings, is it cast iron, it has to be camera you look at. I'm guaranteeing you that there's CVC in this building just because of the age and the time it was built. I'll also guarantee you, when I looked at it, there is asbestos in the intersection. If you don't tear out, if you don't make any fire, firework, airborne, you don't have to remove. So the floor tile, you just put new, new gravity plank in over the top of it, it'll be asbestos displaced. If you went to demolish this, you've got environmental issues, you've got, uh, the whole demo costs of it, and then you definitely plan in the lot, which is filling these with compacted sand, so you actually build a house on it. So you're looking at probably six hundred thousand, half of the new six hundred thousand, demolish the building. Has to be managed up to a certain degree. So to demolish the building, put six, six lots, and then you'd be buying, you'd be dramatically buying it.
Dan, third, um, um, isn't that, in building the new school, was that a part of tearing down the school, was it the block that already been there? So that part is staying there.
But it's not here, if we go back, blow it up and school, right?
How close?
Yeah.
How close was that, in the two hours, what, what's the estimate? You got it. So to put, to put six, to breathe, to put six houses for this? Probably not just one.
Mike, you are aware of that that wall needs to be repaired on the south side?
I looked at the wall, uh, the good news is, this is a well concrete type of panel building, so it didn't move anywhere. I don't think that there's an issue with the footings personally, I think there's an issue with frost. Uh, you're, for dirt back though, it's building, you brought up to that frost line. You're getting frost inside the building at the wall line, you think it's pushing the building out when it freezes. So if there's a teacher here that was in one of them classroom, there are five that are extremely cold or blurred in classrooms. I think that's what's happening, not a sudden in the foot.
Well, that I can imagine, the stone here for twenty years, and every car has seen, you know, the carpet on the wall, like that, you know, the fans coming in, um.
So every time frost that's underneath it in the wintertime, it stains that wall on, and then frost comes out and goes back, so the wall turns to gold, yes. I don't see it moving up and down. Your engineers report, I'm not an engineer.
Well, I would think, I would look at it. Because the issue here is done, you know?
Well, it, it's, it's not an obstacle to the panel. If there's a problem with the footing in that area, it's just, you're on just a company, you put some peers out there, you, you, that's it. I've done projects like this before, we asked to stay. While on just Davis and Office Campus, we did one, and the same, so it'd be, it'd be an easy fix if there is a vex.
Dan? Is the school district have a, is it?
No, no, I would say no, there's, there's no, like, you're gonna have, you're, you're, you're.
Did you hear that?
Thirty thousand, thirty, three hundred and seventy-four thousand down. Seventy thousand for your woman.
You nominated me another department.
Um, so I know there's been two or three, oh, I, one or one or two.
I, I'm new to it. And you answered the question, I was talking, this is sort of a four and a half square foot.
And you were right about the, the price it's listed for right now, it is down seventy thousand and three hundred and seventy-nine thousand with price. And you were right about the, the price it's listed for right now, it is down seventy thousand and three hundred seventy-nine thousand with price.
So, again, a quick map of this is, you're, they brought me to a four person wedding, you do, on sixty parking spot. To handle the people that were in the apartment, the people that are there.
I don't know, Mike, to then, or you might already know. Off the street, are they, where you know, you stand in the purple?
Right, it goes based on your city code. So, the city code for man, you know, it's two parking spots for everyone, regardless of the size. Other towns, it's two parking spots minimum, and if you go over a certain amount, you have to have an extra stall. But, they city by city, you take the parking.
Does that come from the owner?
We have that. We do have that, and I believe it's two. We should double check it and check, you can check that up right away.
I'm sorry, I don't think you. They just see, and, on the, your screen, uh, where. I have a ton of experience on that, so the shop called, it was mine, and it, you know, we're, we're, yes. Right. Right, it's, it's about scheduling. So, if you've got a volleyball room scheduled from any town, and you have their practice, the gym is off limits. It's just a matter of your, of how you're shutting the gym down and that. If you have a whole wedding here, don't split your hours, so it's a matter of having someone who can schedule it. Yes, we do do other, I actually, we're involved with about thirty-five different event centers we cater to. So, it's, it's, like, we haven't talked about it yet, but I walked in here in sixteen seconds, I said, that, this is pickleball. And that's a community thing where you pay five bucks, you come down here from eleven o'clock to one o'clock, and pay five bucks, and you just play pickleball with other people. Stuff like that has been done. Right. So, the, the utilities for the rest of the school would be taken care by the owners. You also have a number of comparison, you can easily take your, or, so, you know, it's cool with full of kit. Which means mop and flushes, which means, you know, probably cooling and heating more dramatic than it had to be. This building should not run ninety thousand dollars a year, but you do make it up. Again, doing a performer, doing a performer, an event center, seeing what the revenue stream is on the event center. You know, I got the call this afternoon that this meeting was going on, I knew about this last week, so we can produce a performer on how the event center can work itself.
He would be the owner, um, he would be the owner, but he's talking about granting us a long-term lease at one dollar or zero cost, so we could have a three year lease. At no cost. And he wouldn't have to do that if it was the sole order. He's able to do that because we're dropping that front end cost, and we're not gonna pay three hundred seventy-five thousand for building, which he wouldn't pay anything.
And again, the, the fees that are produced off the section, the events. Aren't, this event center won't profit, the goal is to make it so that we, that it's a break even. Then there's the city portion of like, city, you know, events, meetings, like this, except, again, all comes down to the scheduler, how it gets scheduled. And assuming it's scheduled, it'll be a long period of that. No, I'm, I'm thinking that actually someone living in apartments has become the scheduler and the house person, and the, that they'll have it on, that will have it on site. Again, a few hours old, but what we've done, what we've done on, I have a forty year building. St. Peter, we have the Old Mayo Clinic, so we have an onsite manager. And they take care of the both of them, which means snow flowing, ongoing, any, uh, maintenance issues that happen in the apartment buildings, and they would do the scheduler for the public part portion.
Does anybody check if this would, they'd still be willing to sell, or sell the building to the city for a dollar? With our attention on burning around and selling it to a wildfire? I mean, I wonder who the district's gonna be okay with that? Because that may be like, the district could go out and sell the building to Mike. What I'm saying? No, but, but the, we, 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 we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't. We, and the city turns around, it's also, like, that, if by, or, or, or.
We don't plan on making a profit. Like, if we, if we buy it for a dollar, I mean, we're gonna, I'm assuming, we're gonna perk on the head, we're not gonna make a profit on the building.
Yeah, I, I believe that, I talked with George one time, and he can, it's our cost of, it's, it's, it's thirty-five. Our cost could be anywhere between like thirty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred dollars, if we change the title and all that stuff, you know? It's not thirty-two dollars, it's gonna be a little more, probably guaranteed, it's gonna be under ten dollars, and it's seventy-five hundred, you know? If we got, if we were to make any money, just having an opportunity to have a community center or a lifetime kind of life lease would be a really great payback for the city. Search its mouth, take it over, and turn partnership with life and.
Well, a, a couple of things, if it goes private, it becomes taxed, it's a property tax. Number one, number two, the property value goes up because we're a free market. Number three, the demolition cost, if there are no other buyers that come forward, the demolition cost is double of what we asked for. So, the school district can save that money, and it's demolition cost, again, I don't think it's still gonna be a gamble. With dice that you're rolling, is there another person standing in the way, waiting to buy a building? For two hundred, three hundred, whatever, thousand dollars. So, I'm saying that that person is not, this is the deal at work. You know, we talked about tax income and financing, you know, costs, it takes money to set up a business, we talked about active aidment. There is, though, I was involved with the Duckberry Bowl on one sixty-nine. The state of Minnesota was jumping for joy to give them money to demo the whole, it's called lighted property. I bought the new old mall, the market pot mall, they're looking to get this money, but it's called dilapidated property. This would be considered dilapidated property, because they can stand empty, and you get the point big time, because it's a small rural community. So, there's revenue sources to get in, again, price of everything goes up, the price of rent goes up. The goal is not for you to put a part of money in my pocket, the goal is to build affordable housing that I can make a profit on. But, yeah, it's a ton, a ton of good thunderstorms, a ton of good thunder that's about.
There's still, you know, yes, it's probably, you see, correct?
No, that's not correct. It's once, once a private party owns it, the pri- a private party has to pay taxes.
You mean private party?
Yes. Partner in the sense that there's gonna be a, a community, uh, gathering space here, partner in the sense that, that there'll be some utility costs, hundred per share. Revenue generated out of this building, but it, we need to manage it, but. Yes. But it's a minimal dollar. Again, the way property taxes, the way property works is to perform on, to perform on, it tells you it's cash flow, this cash flow then is what faces the value of the building. Value of this building, like somebody told me, when we were in, is not one hundred dollars, it's dramatically lower. It's based on the cash revenue that you get out of the building. And what we do is, with the county, um, adjusted, is, um, show them what the actual value of buildings is, cash, that we got, the cash that you can use. No, and it's, it's, again, I smiled, we would put a performer together based on how many, I mean, some of the phone calls, only, very short, it's through the basketball association, about the association. Again, I know you would, the way pickleball fees work, there are a number of people that show up to play pickleball, but we can do all of those things out together, and find out what the cash flow is building, and there's anything that we. You know, and a conservative investment, if you do ten with it, it's a good one, you, you hell yes. Because people come from all over, they're doing the same fear, you know, all you gotta do is set up a transport system back there, all the help, hey, don't need to do rent, tell you. People who rent this were renting a heartbeat for two thousand dollars. They might be able to lose twenty, but conservatives would do your cash flow, your form, like, ten, ten way. That's twenty thousand dollars towards doing utility bills and private taxes, and so on, and so on. This becomes, the amount of the, that becomes tied to cash. And again, this is two hours old, so we can work all the, we can.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is there still talk of then moving the city offices into the old offices here? And then, current city hall building would be sold, which would be money for the city, right? Or is that not in, on the books anymore?
I thought, he's open to having city hall, council chamber, GFW, all right there.
Okay.
If you want that. It's new, it's better than two hours ago, or three hours ago, it's very fresh. Um, before, before tonight, this building is gonna be tore down, and we have invested, excited to do something.
Listening to everybody talk, it's really exciting because of all the ideas that are coming out. And I feel a little bit sorry for you, like, a little bit put on, on the spot here for asking dollar loans and such. Really, truly, though, what we need to know is counsel, would you support working together with the developer, such as been described? They buy it, they, uh, take on all responsibilities. So, in other words, would you be willing to have a community, was it worth it? That's what we're kind of coming down to. All, all of that would be, you know, a problem. If there would be, all of that would be.
Sorry. So, Mr. Drummer, um, actually, with mentioning some of the ideas that I had, it kind of resonated with the thoughts that I had when I was first looking at houses to buy. Um, along with other friends that I have met at, for work, because I'm not originally from southern Minnesota, I come up in the city. So, um, initially wanted to stay within, with the, the access to work, but it was very clear that the housing market was not in support of, um, those that are still working their way up in the workforce and trying to make a living and whatnot. So, we ended up looking around, and this was one of the closest places to Mankato, and when we walked into the house, it feels real town, felt really good. Um, so I do know that since I do work here, I've had four other coworkers who have bought houses in this area. And I know that there are young families that would appreciate and would probably contribute to it, I can't speak for them, but, I would assume that they would want someone for, somewhere for their kids to go after school, learn in winter, when, you know, outside activities aren't always accessible, when it's, when, negatively, the windshield, but, um. And then there's also the other factor, the weddings. Uh, I got married last year, and I actually had to go out of state for my wedding because of the cost. I searched everywhere in northern and southern Minnesota to look for a wedding. There was nothing affordable, there was nothing I could find. That was the same issue when I first moved out on my own from Madison Lake, and I was looking for an apartment back in twenty eighteen. I couldn't find anywhere to live that wasn't under a thousand dollars for a one bedroom. I couldn't afford that, um, and so I finally ended up renting from a smaller, um, couple that had houses up on Locust Street in Mankato. But, I know that recently, when helping one of my friends try to find an apartment, there is nothing available out there, absolutely nothing for families. So, it would be nice to bring in apartments, because people in my generation, they're not all, they'll be able to afford houses. It's becoming pretty clear that, um, our generation is gonna struggle, and generations behind us are gonna struggle to get those loans, and to get housing, just with all the costs. So, I do think that there would be a value, and it would be nice if people would just at least consider it. Um, because I know that I would like to leave my kids somewhere, or have someone go instead of just getting into trouble, because they're bored. They're losing, and wrecking things at the base zone.
Can you speak to your name, please?
I'm Kristy Roxell.
Um, Jay Wintersen, I guess, um, you know, with all the discussions of the community center, and all kinds of one, buzzing things and stuff like that, but, I think when it comes right now to it, the last question, um, would, would you be able to propose to it, or again, or in favor of it? And I think it's a really ambiguous question, because nobody knows what's been thought, after we get it right now. Because, I mean, in the end result, and I, and I kind of thought about this, you know, Paul, and I hope I'm not speaking for you, Paul, but I'm kind of, like, I was thinking about the same thing that you were, and I kind of pulled up on, on my telephone, um, and, you know, you think about the community center aspect and all that kind of stuff. And, uh, the Amboy Snowbirds, uh, separate entity from the city, you only know that, that, Amboy. And, uh, I'm sure we've run into a result a couple of times. And, um, but the city doesn't have anything to do with that, that's a private enterprise, only about the Snow, Snowville Club, as it might be like Mike, um, in the end result. Um, you know, I mean, as, as long as it doesn't cost me anything, that's not a worry. I, I, I mean, I gotta tell you that I think that taxes are as high as I really would like to see them. And if, if somebody tells me that we take on this topic, and it's gonna cost an extra five hundred dollars a year in property taxes, I probably won't be very happy about it. If it costs me five dollars, I might say, yeah, it's all right. There's just too many unanswered questions right now. And I think that, um, you know, we've talked about this long enough, that something would really possibly happen. I think that we really need, that somebody, doing some research, getting some art pictures, and taking all these question marks that everybody's throwing around, we can get this for rent, and if this is a building. We need to see something in black, just to make any sort of decision. And it also has, you guys sort of work on, fly by the seat of your pants with, with your information and stuff like that, it's all.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, good, and I, I actually agree with you. Um, that's the point I'm trying to make here, is that, does the community support us in best to be, or, or moving forward at all, whether it's. Whether it's five dollars or five hundred dollars, does the community support a community center? It'll fail either way, if it's not supported, it'll fail either way if it's not, if the, the.
So, in what you're asking, is, is it, they want to, you know?
Correct.
You're asking, what is the community feel about having, they feel they're wanting, they feel they're wanting, they like, that, that, all of that, what's like, what?
That's, that's basically what I'm asking, like, what, if you took money off the, it's the idea of a community. Uh, personally, I went through this twenty-two years ago, I built a foundation, and I was a great big no. The community did not support it. We could have had a community center right back, right there, uh, for like fifty grand, I think, it was really low. And it was a resounding no, there was no interest.
A lot of that.
And the entanglements involved with having community, I mean, we all know there's, it's easy to say you can have all the, somebody else mentioned, you know, what you, I mean, you have. You, you have to schedule volunteers, and you have to have people do that, and you have to have people show up, and you gotta enforce things. I mean, there's, there are entanglements that a lot of people don't wish to be involved in. And at that time, they, the community did not support community center. City, it was city at that time. But it would have been like, more than years, we're operating something like this, you know? I, that, that, I guess that's my point. I might as well share it, I'm fully, or, working with the developer, to make the front end cost come down, so that he can afford to develop this whole entire building. This piece included, um, make, to make it possible for that to happen, because people moving to town is what, that's what's going to make it good. Really isn't, all the, all the other thing is people coming to town and living. So, if, if we can make that one, in my opinion, that's, that's a great thing. But, and if we need a community center, if we would like to have one, the community would support one, I would work toward that, and that, and too, I'm hoping like it. But, and personally, my own personal opinion is that we wouldn't do this. As a community. Now, as individuals, as what Mr. Barnard said, we could individually rent, you know, and all that, support it, publicize it, and all that, as a community. Um, that would be fine, is I, then, then we're probably, but, but for us to have to budget us X amount of dollars per year, uh, just to do the things I'm talking about, you know, that's, that may not be powerful for, for the community.
So, what everybody thinks. Um, you could, every time I would get a, I should have leverage, you know, to have a staff, and to have a, many, you know, and all of that. And I don't, I'm ready, that's ready, thanks, this, you know, you're always there, or like, what, are people like, actually, with the theories, and I, 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 that's what I'm thinking about, I'm like, wait. Say no more, I don't know what you're talking about, but I.
Um, excellent comment, excellent, um, uh, I don't know, you all heard that? Do, and you, you hear it, um, um, okay. So, we don't, that's a great point, really. So, community centers, assets of community that's available for community needs. Just like somebody said earlier, Steve involved about, if you wanna have a kid's birthday party, just, community doesn't mean, create answers, be involved with it, depending on what you want. If there's a wedding here, it's an asset for community, things can be held here, but it doesn't mean that everybody just walks in and can play all the games that they want. It is a community asset that's for rent to cover the cost of the maintenance of that building and utilities. I, right. We talked about that too, and I would not put a gym in here. This isn't gymnasium.
No, not.
But no. So we actually talked about the first room off the old school on the right hand side. Again, it's community feedback. Community, if it doesn't exist, it's community. And they're looking for that. If you walk in the old school door, it'll go right off to the right hand side. That could be the point four seven, the community asset. Could also be an asset to the, to the uh, people living in the apartment. So we we talked about that, but again, it's planned, but there's a difference between a physical workout place and a community events.
Have we found out yet how much it'll cost to put up the pickleball court? Outside? I know it's been brought up in the last two meetings, so how much is that when it was already mentioned that it could be right here?
Are you directing that for me?
I don't know if anybody has figured out.
You've made some phone calls already.
I'm looking generally up at all of you, if anybody has found out. I had heard um, I brought up at the last two council meetings about putting up a pickleball court somewhere. I don't know where, sorry. But I'm wondering, to start out fresh on a piece of ground like that, how much does it cost? When we would already have that available with like two hundred bucks or whatever. Or he would.
Right. Or he would.
That's right. Well, you don't know what that house, that would be at the time, so.
So what, how what, how much was it you said?
I honestly still don't know the game, so I don't know. I just know we brought it up, so I'm just wondering if we sold out the park or something, how much would that cost? Would we be out of our pockets again when he said we could do half a park something like that right here?
Right. So outdoor pickleball courts in Minnesota are not really getting, not very popular. One of the biggest concerns to outdoor pickleball is weather. And it's not the rain, it's not the snow. It's the wind. Pickleballs are extremely light and they'll blow all over heck. So everybody that just sees converting these courts to pickle tennis courts or pickleball courts are finding out that people don't really go to it. They'd rather go to the computer rec center and play indoors to the summertime, not the summertime, you should get the smoothies, you should get the seven o'clock in the morning if they're busy. So again, indoor pickleball in the summertime is played more often than outdoor pickleball. Well, just to further that a little bit, I know they're proud about that meeting, just as an idea, that's something that we could develop. So it's not an athletic, maybe it's a sport. And it's a, it's an event that's usually played with a six year old grandchild and a sixty year old grandma or grandma. It's it's cross gatherer nation of games, not where they're popular. Yeah, and that's why I brought it up.
I'm not here to talk about pickleball. I don't give a shit about pickleball. Tom Barnes, I lived in this town my whole life. I love this town. Um, I agree with Tom, I agree with the use of uh, of this community center. I don't. I I don't want to be Debbie down here, but I don't, I really don't. Do I want to see the gym knocked down? No. It comes down to money. And I want to make sure that I understand this because I don't want to leave here tonight and then everybody else is telling me, no, no, that wasn't the thing, that was the. So I want to make sure that I understand. So Mike Drummond is going to buy. You're going to be the sole owner of the building. You're gonna, you're gonna own it all. Well, I just want to make sure that that in the city, what we talked about, I'm. So he's going to buy the building. He's gonna, he's gonna do his thing. And then the gymnasium will be fit. But we rent it from him. So there is no joint effort here besides the fact that he's not, he's not buying a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar building. Is that, that that is correct? I don't, I I I don't understand the energy. You have, you have an office, hey, why are we going to rent something when something's already paid for? I I guess I don't understand. There's just a lot of unknowns to be. And I think before we go any farther, and I understand the meeting. That's why we're having a meeting, but I think there's got to be. There's, there's got to be a lot of things discussed. There's got to be a lot of numbers. Um. I I I guess for me, I'm. Because I don't know where you're going to come up with the ninety thousand dollar utilities. Now, I know that you're saying that the. The toilets aren't flushed, I get that at school, there's a lot more to it. I'm I'm still just a little skeptical about the whole thing. I'm I'm not going to say no. But I think that there's just got to be a lot of things cleared up. And.
I totally agree with that. That's, that's what we're saying. Again, this is fresh. What we do now is go back, put a performer together with how many weddings we did, how many hours of pickleball, what the cost per hour, what the price would be to rent it for a birthday party, to get all those numbers to this. The ninety thousand dollars is a price that was paid for the utility of the entire property. Two thirds or more of that goes away when you close those doors and make a department for that. You're talking about literally eating the silver. My guess is this is a complete building one. Until it down. Which the thermostat gets cracked down to sixty degrees, it gets back up et cetera, so. I actually have projects like this. We can do a quick performer on one of the events. As far as the city hall portion of the door, there's no fees. There's a dollar a year. That's the partnership that you're talking about. It's not a partnership of holding land together. It's actually a partnership and hey, this is, this is a possibility for us to move in there like for the tenth day consulting. Building, it's a ninety ninety lease or whatever it has to be for a buck a year or whatever it has to be. And we talked about that and actually have a tenant here so that when you come here, it doesn't feel like. I mean, that's as important as anything, you know, staff, you're comfortable in here, you're supposed, it will be part of the community. Where you go to have community activities, it might be a city council meeting, they might open the doors, the kids play. I mean, we'll define all that stuff for you, but again. Never did I expect to have talk this much or never did I expect to be producing numbers. Again, I can roll numbers off the top of my head because I've been doing this thirty years and we do it all. We actually do it all over the five state. It just so happens that this particular project is in my backyard. So the next step is to produce number. Okay, I just want to back up a step. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to clarify. Was that some time ago, we sent out a survey, was that a year ago about, maybe a bit before. And the resounding, there is, I think it was two hundred, yes, we want a community center responses. I believe it was two hundred. Something like that. Out of, out of this, we knew that two hundred, we said, yes, we want a community center, yes, even if it's not. And so we wanted to be sure that we were actually hearing the people that are paying the bill. And that's why we had this meeting. And y'all were invited because you pre-asked us. And anyway, probably meeting anyway, oh. However, we wanted to hear, you know, from the folks that pay the bill. And. I don't know, is, if, do, does anyone else want to speak? I was, I was going to just start summarizing a little bit, that's all right.
The survey was just then to go under residence or business, it's like, well, because I, we did not receive the survey now.
I thought maybe it was. They were in uh, June or three, they wanted uh, you know, they wanted.
And that's what we got to find out, the numbers. There is no getting around that. What it's going to cost. They pay, everybody wants a community center and talk some time. Or pay another community coming, whatever it is. But it's still got to be down to numbers as far as I'm concerned. So that's where I took, I just, I want to know what my tax is really. Hopefully not.
Those questions. This just seems like a circle we're going. It's talked about the compliments. Under the compliments, they don't have an answer. Who is going to be taken on getting all these questions answered for us?
Mr. Drummond, is there something, somebody you can hire, doors, how to do all this? One person that, and people making phone calls? You? Well, I say that's what we got to have, because everybody wants. Jay said, if it's going to cost five hundred dollars a year, you don't want it. You know, I mean.
We have that ICS group come down, remember? Um, the ICS group come down to the city. And they came down and they went to the building and they kind of gave us a message that's how much it would cost for the city to get this into this like. Awesome, like remember the events that are being done? And those numbers scared us to death. So that's why we keep revisiting things because we didn't, we were not comfortable with that at all. That was not even the enemy. It was like, we're talking two million dollars to revamp this building. And well, there was different plans, two million and forty six, thirteen more. So that's why we keep going back. They did different, we did different things. They just marked the building, they got rid of the whole part of the scenario. There were different scenarios and it was like, that's what they do. They go and they revamp buildings for cities. It was not even anywhere near our budget. That was not even an option. No, this was, this was like for us to redo it. We just needed to get that number. Cross that off and like, from speed, and we did it right away.
So we say we had two hundred, yes, community center. How many responses total did we have to that coming in?
I feel like it was, excuse me. I feel it was two hundred and something total, maybe two hundred and fifteen total, and I think we had around a hundred and sixty houses. If I remember correctly. And I think there was maybe like, you know, thirty absolutely now, I think it's ten or fifteen, didn't know.
They all went on.
They. Yeah.
There was an, an year of this.
Yep. That was over two years ago.
So no, it's five, about ninety five.
Yes.
Yes.
And we did ask, wasn't that a question, do you rent or do you own a home? It was a long time ago. I feel like we did, we, I remember taking that into consideration though. Because it's a whole different ballgame when you're renting a property as opposed to when you're, you own it in a senior site. So.
It would buy you some space.
Yes. I I feel like some of us, like maybe it's Chinese, many things held out in front of us, which is too good to be true, but once your numbers are, once your numbers come up. You know, good for us obviously. If we could get some, I mean, I do believe that there will be some, that some of our own communities, like towns, that's probably not going to be so much. But people are looking for this event to come at all times. Um, I don't think it'll be bringing a lot of um, revenue or start a shopping and things like that. I would say because of the Amboy Snowbird. I think the Amboy Snowbird is very well, a lot of us have used it, but I don't think like the town has bought it because of the, you know, the snowbirds or whatever. And same with um, what's it called, Temperton? They, I think that that's been a team a lot. That's very well used, but I also don't think like Temperton has grown because of the, you know, the community spending or whatever, so. Um, I just want to say that I think this was a very informational meeting, I think there are a lot of being real, to me, they have, you know, one hundred, they don't want to pay more in taxes. So again, seeing those numbers will probably help everybody else. I I I think we all kind of thought this was going to cost a lot of tax relief, which it sounds like it won't, so maybe it will be a thing, I don't know. But I just want to feel my two cents here, so, thank you guys.
I guess my question is for Dan, it's earlier, Dan, what would happen if uh. We kind of enter into this agreement and something comes uh, by Friday and wants to buy this building for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, X amount of dollars. Would the city of Good Thunder still have the first half of community or the first come, first served?
So, um. I don't think we want to vote for. So, um. You know, at least not at the school. But we can certainly not have. Of the community. To make it more. You know, it's a lot of. It has to be more than that. Why, this is what we're asking.
I think over the last eight, ten months, we've touched on this at the regular compromise a number of times and all five of us have come to the conclusion, we cannot own it. But we could partnership, like Tom said, we could get it through the school. At whatever cost that may be, and we can partner with an individual that will take and develop it, make it thrive. I don't think that would be a bad partnership. You know, um, I don't think we could go wrong, but we're all in consensus, I believe, over the last eight, ten months, that there's no way we can afford it. The city can't afford it. But I think what the offers we've heard tonight, it sounds like we could be in a partnership. Save this individual quite a little money, hot, hot money, so he has more money to build with, fix with. Is that sound like a sound investment or not? Hey, no? This all happened in the last four or five hours. I've never talked to Mike before in my life until this afternoon and he got back to me and I said, well. Your luck, it's open today at five o'clock, it's the six and the seven, and I didn't know he was coming and here he is. And I think we've made more progress tonight, more, two hours we've been here than we have in a year and a half we've talked about it.
I think aside from the community center, if Mike comes in and develops for affordable housing. We can't lose that way. This community, I've been here since two thousand, and we didn't nail more. Um. Hasn't been going anywhere. I think everybody needs that. Something has to start while rolling the dice.
I guess with that, if we could get this partnership going with Mike, Tom mentioned here the other night that you know. That you know, uh, we have some land available maybe to build houses on, on the west side of town there. If we could partnership and get this, that still leaves city funds available to start another little subdivision. To get some infrastructure out there, water sewer, you know, uh. Probably is not gonna be the right time now or the next year, so I don't know, I'm not into the real estate, none of this is the way it's probably done. But we still saved our money to maybe put it in other ventures, as long as this one didn't cost us anything.
We have three letters that we should maybe read out loud here.
Okay. One of the letters we have, uh, like you were here, we commented on some stuff, um, John Brood, you can hear, I mean, his comments already. Um, we have to the city of Good Thunder, my opinion is to let the district tear down the school, then divide the property into lots for sale. This would allow for new housing and generate new taxes for the city. Sincerely, Alan Walters. Love from their opinion. Um, to whom I make concern, in regards to the letter I received from the city of Good Thunder concerning the purchase of the Good Thunder School. I do not believe that it would be wise to invest in the school building. My reasons for saying that is because of the cost of repairs, maintenance, taxes, et cetera. Would buy for, would by far outweigh any revenue that it would bring in. I hope you give this a serious consideration. Thank you very much. Just wanna make sure that their voices were heard on the phone and on the media.
For as far as public comment?
I'm all for someone coming in and developing this property. That a lot of my taxes. Do not. Get raised. I mean. And break the revenue to the new debt. But I am not gonna be happy if my property gets, our construction building, our two residential properties go up. One die for this building.
I understand what you're saying, Marie. Now, my thoughts, we're gonna have a budget meeting here. Something like that, you know, and, uh. You can't deny that everything anybody bought in the last. Eight, ten months has done nothing but, uh. We have enough money in our, and this is just my thoughts, there's four other people here that'll help make the decision. We have enough money this year that, you know, we went up. If we went zero or we went one percent, we could get by. You know, to help people out, because everybody that went to the grocery store paid more money, everybody that drove to work to Mankato paid more money. So you help lead up at two, three, six percent again, you know, and it all adds up. But we have enough money where we wouldn't have to, you know, maybe zero or one percent, that's my thoughts, you know. To get people through this stuff here. Because we're not broke by no means. And if we can enter with this venture tonight, the individual that's here, and it costs us a barrel. I think it's a plus for our town.
But the problem is too, with the city making all this money. I mean, I'm a very conservative person. I'm all for saving money. But when the city has this abundance of money. In their accounts. That does not allow the city to qualify for grants or anything else. That money has been paid for by the taxes of our projects. And if we have this huge lump sum, in my opinion, it should be given back to the people who paid it for. Benefit the people who have already. Infrastructure, fixed roads, I mean, do marketing to try to break this. Because every time you raise my tax on my rental properties and my future building, I now have to raise my rent. For my tenants to come live here, and it's gonna be no different with Mike. He's gonna have to make. Enough money to cover his expenses out of the rent on his property, done this thirty years, you know how it works. Price goes up, rent goes up. Assets go up. Everything goes up, it's all different, food, clothing, utilities. People cannot afford increases. Everybody is struggling right now. And for people to say, you know, well, I'm not struggling or I'm not struggling, they, well, probably. Struggling right now, people cannot afford higher rent, higher taxes, higher rate of the business. So that is just my opinion. But the people I've talked to. They agree with me. I have a renter says, you continue to raise my rent, I'm out of here. He's leaving the money, he's leaving. But I'm not gonna take the loss. Because of something the city did that I don't. Just please don't do something that is gonna cost the city more money. Because people are gonna look into that and they come to buy a house. They want to know how much the property costs. When the property taxes are on the same as what you're paying them. Mapleton, look what they've got. Got a great city, oh, they've got that, they've got business. They manage the property, but the tax, they bring me from there. I mean, it's. You know, I just don't think.
You gotta agree that that school being made, then will create boom for that town. You know, where our towns are gonna, we're gonna lose out. But we need to, we need to. We need to be creative and inventive to help get our town motivated.
But does it have to be always the expense of the business owner or owner? Not when you, you know, you're not saying, well, we have a revenue account. I have a good idea what kind of money the city, city wants. And because of that money in there, city won't even follow by for grants. Because we're gonna say, you got how much you can save. So why don't you use that money towards your city? I've been there, I know.
We can take that money, you know, we have money, put it away, put it away over the last twenty-five years, whatever it may be, you know. We've lined a lot of sewers, we haven't bonded for any of that, paid for it in-house, we pay ourselves back. Um, if we would expand residential, we could take some of that money and, and not go bond for it. Get our water and sewer services out there. We could go a long ways with that, yeah. Well, for a long time, we had no land available. We have no land available. Now, so far to the west here along Hiller Drive. We could have a chance of building some residential.
Who owns it?
Nothing guaranteed, no.
I can't hear you, Robert.
Are you?
I can't hear you.
There's nothing guaranteed, you know, I mean, it would be eventually, just like this, going up there.
It has been as bad for the city as it, I will sell you this land and develop.
I'd say maybe eight, ten months ago, I talked to an individual who was still available then. So that's our only avenue we have for property causes. So. Where?
Behind the cul-de-sac, behind the clubs, and that's all the property.
Yep.
It's all what?
All the same owner that surrounds the town.
And maybe they've been asked.
If we'd have to expand the lagoon, we'd have to ask the same people. In nineteen seventy, when it was expanded, they were not happy because the city condemned it back then. That's fifty years ago. They do not hard to a land. And they, I believe the city condemned it at that time, was that right? And that's how they got the land to expand the lagoons. We're at that point now that we might have to expand the lagoons again. Uh, we got the engineers working on that right now. See, there, there is four acres on the countryside or between the highway and the present lagoons. If we run into a problem where we can't acquire land, maybe four acres could get us by for a long time by taking trees out. You know, reconfiguring the driveway and all that. So at the last meeting, we instructed the engineer to proceed with some of that. It's, it's tough when you have no land. And I mean, uh, there may be a chunk north of town, uh. Don't know if they wanna part with it or not right now.
Yeah, Robert, I have a question. I understand when you're talking about the lagoon and having to expand. I totally understand that. But since when did this council or any other council get involved in real estate? I don't understand why the council is involved in real estate.
That, that's a good point, and actually, we shouldn't be. And, and actually, that wouldn't be the way we better would go. We would try to work with a developer, with the funds we have, to maybe, maybe some of the underground work, affordable work. So that the lot prices can be attractive, or maybe even unattractive. Folks. Is all. Yeah, that's, that's not really the intent, we've just never been able to even access anything for, to even talk about. You know, that's the problem.
It's available. The city knows that it could be available.
So you're right, I mean, we probably aren't, we're not real, you know, neither are we developers, that's, that's why we're not really. Thrilled about, you know, ending up owning this building. We, we don't really want, we don't wanna own this building. We're not developers. We're not people that, it's not our business. We're more in the streets, sewers, water, islands, that kind of stuff, parks. We, we're, we know that, we don't, we don't know the other stuff. Am I on? Yeah. Are we gonna get back to what we, are we gonna have? Mr. Drummer, look into all the costs that he could, and come up with a number for us? Pretty much everybody's saying. Uh, but this is all gonna, not gonna just maybe get across with maybe, but maybe that way he can tell us. And how it's gonna go about. To do it legally.
I think it's gonna give, we're gonna have to give him some time to search it all out.
Yeah.
And make sure it is a viable option for him and us.
Great. No, I, yeah, we gotta move on with that, yeah, while us. I just wanted to make one other point. This is the one I worry about a little bit. If we don't, if we're not successful in, in working with a developer. And working together to make something happen here. The school district was gracious enough to give us first refusal. But if, if we don't take advantage of that in some fashion. And someone comes, it's their perfect right to sell to somebody for twenty-five thousand dollars, just like Brad and him. That was their price, twenty-five grand. The first time it was sold, the second time it was fifteen, the third time it was twenty-five thousand. And then things started falling down, becoming dilapidated. And now, if somebody came along, the school district had three hundred thousand dollars tomorrow and wanted to buy it, I'd sell it. Because it'd be good for Good Thunder too. You put that kind of money into a property, it's not gonna sit idle. It's not gonna be, um, dilapidated. But if you have someone who ends up buying a cheap property. Because it's the last, or the last purchase offer. That worries me, you know? And, and, and maybe it would never happen. But when I see what this sits in town, maybe possible uses for it. You know, Mr. Drummer has the ideas that he sees, he already seen. It's gonna take his idea, like he said to me, and I'm gonna make it work.
Yes, the only comment I have as a point, if this school ends up selling for twenty-five thousand dollars. From what Mike has said tonight, he doesn't come and buy for twenty-five thousand dollars to make a bunch of money. I'm not worried at all, because I feel like, at this point. Mike should be the owner of this building if he thinks this is a viable business or whatever else. And he don't believe that the city should be involved whatsoever. And I would assume eventually. The school district, one way or another, that they will be to the point where they're willing to sell this thing for twenty-five thousand dollars. And I should hope Mike's there to buy it at that point. But I just don't think at that point. The city should be involved at all whatsoever. I can't wait to see this when it's all done and you're done with it, Mike. I just don't believe you guys should be involved, that's it.
Well, there's pros and cons. Uh, we have good ideas, we have some that. Probably are not happy. Uh, I don't know where, where we're setting you to be tonight. Um, I think Mike presented a very good. Image of what he could do with this school. I mean, Brad, here's a question for you. Mike took this over, Nick. Just say, we got it. Now, I'm just gonna figure out, say we got a ten thousand dollar, we turn it around and we sell this back to Mike, ten thousand dollars. And he gives us a lease on this room here for twenty years of life or whatever it means, worked out. Is that still not a good deal?
From what I gather, this, like, he's going to rent this below to weddings. And pickleball and everything else. So. Like, this one dollar leasing thing, I know, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what you're getting for that, that dollar. You know, I mean, I don't understand what Mike did where he's gonna rent this up, that's how he makes the money. But I, I just don't understand where you guys are coming from, in fact. You don't just get this gym free, Mike's not, like, here's the keys, have kids up here on the pool table, you have. There's gonna be, there's gonna be money that he, he made for kids to run around out there. So. And I. I just don't think it's. It might not cost you cash money, but it's not something that just can be opened for us. And I completely understand that Mike has this, that it won't be. But I think that's Mike's decision to make this, uh. Something that you made your money in, at that point, he should be the one buying it, he be the one drawing it. I can't wait to check for the tax card to come every year, it'll all happen, and I don't know.
I find it interesting, you point to me, if we're leasing a part of the building, is that not up to us then to rent it out? For the different things? If you're leasing as part of the building, or is it not for you to use or to sell?
If you're leasing as part of the building, are, is it not for you or for the city to save the rent?
That brings, that brings a question of who's gonna do all that? You know, again, who's gonna create it? Who's gonna do everything that was already mentioned? You know, it's a good point.
I can say when that's right, you're renting out for the wedding or for parties or whatever. Then why are we eating my new? You're going to see that it should be, you have to be something awesome.
So I asked.
And I can not have the profit.
So I asked you this, Robert. So in your mind, with us, please, you just back mine or whatnot? Do you think we're gonna be able to come up here two days for basketball night, ten, ten days for pickleball night? Those are free, that's, that's all.
I was just gonna say, to other people, Robert, um, if Mike or us don't buy it and an outside entity comes in and buys it. How much control do we as a city have of what gets put here? Because somebody made a promise. Somebody's coming here and for the strip club. Is that something that we done or is that something that the council is able to connect on? I'm glad you guys laughed. I don't know the answer. You need to do other people, so.
The only control that we have with something and how it's owned, I mean, a strip club could never go here because that's another mine and a code.
It's what somebody else.
But, but anyways, uh, we would not be able to very easily, um, control the maintenance of the exterior, for example. Yeah, you can send a letter that says the grass is too long, but we all know that that doesn't deteriorate anyway.
So it could end up like the Rappahannan.
See, if, if, if you don't have qualified, reputable, experienced people or company doing this. You know, you could end up that way. That, that's one of the things I do wanna worry about a little bit.
Whereas Mike would have his own people he hires to do all that scheduling and.
I, well, he's, he's got quite a dedication, followers, you know, I mean.
So I was just gonna say, with Mike making a promise, I see that our janitor's here and we have the building until nine o'clock. So I'd like Mike to answer those questions if I can keep, and touch on.
Yeah, so the devil isn't a deal, right? You're getting into the weeds of leasing versus a joint venture. The giant venture is simply their profits under the path to be made out here, the utilities. But when we get to the details, the schedule will take place and there'll be two hours. So it's not a lease per se, if you control a property like you would at the lease commercial space. The lease is for a pocket of legal purposes. That's if city hall go up there. And again, this is just ideally throughout at five o'clock. But the community portion of this, we have no charge, can leave that from, you know, seven to ten on Sunday night or stuff like that. You get into the details and work it out. Again, it goes back to scheduling. So there'll be times, obviously, you're not gonna have a rental to the seventh grade boys' basketball team on a Sunday night at seven o'clock. And so then maybe become community hours. People can come up and do different things. Or a community event can be scheduled like this. And the charges won't be placed then for that. Your, your profit centers are off of the wedding, it's off of the church or pickleball, et cetera, the community aspect of the joint partnership of the, the schedule issue. And those details will all be worked out beyond tonight. And so a proposal will be put back in if this dollar, seven thousand, ten thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars includes this. X amount of time to make profit on the building, pay utilities, taxes. We also bantered about, there's all kinds of B programs. I know the commissioners, and so the media, I used to more than willing to go on and get small towns because of our diet in small towns. There's that. We're talking about tax abatement in the initiative. Takes tax to a certain section of the building and that helps all with the, with the joint ventures. There's all kinds of avenues that we can approach. We just gotta plan and get them, get them into a corral and, and, you know, see what we've got with the city of. Right. Right. You know what? Anniversary party is coming up now. So, so, I mean, event centers are kind of, you know, Friday nights, they're becoming back to their wedding now. Saturdays are obviously a wedding. Afternoon, eleven to ones or pickleball. You, you get into a rhythm with the event center. You basically plan out a community calendar. So you know when you can go play pickleball at five o'clock. You know when, you know, that you'll know that the available times to have. Life members saying for our anniversary party, et cetera. Yeah. Heck, though, some of the ones we've done, I mean, run the one up your chest, we rent them out for Super Bowl games. Uh, we rent them out for Cinco de Mayo or you rent them out for, uh, you know, the Notre Dame. The Michigan State, Ohio game, whatever it is. It's maybe small group, fifty people. But they get together and they pay a fee and they have a part. Super Bowl parties are huge. They are huge. Every event that I do, Super Bowl parties are huge. So it's a matter of creating a calendar. Well, again, in the, in the five short hours or four short hours, that was, that was the, that was the immediate one. There's potential to that, yeah. I mean, one of the things that Jim and I asked around is you guys are looking for a community pit then. I think it, you know, bus comes at seven thirty or eight o'clock or whatever. Doors open at seven o'clock. You got kids running around in here. Move the bus stop people out. Is there a charge for that? No. Bus drops, kids off at three thirty, get the parents a chance to pick it up till four o'clock. Is there a charge for that? No. At four o'clock, basketball. Again, those are all things that we can refine, but don't have the answer. That's, that's the path we're headed now when the jointness happens between the city and the developer. To create a, a schedule. I, I get your question. So how many properties have I sold for? How many properties have I developed policy? Uh, so yes, I can't, I can't answer that question right now. I mean, there's no intention in me at all to, to come in and flip the property. It's not the game, but. Obviously, if we get it up and established, it has value, but nobody in their right mind would come and buy it because it doesn't have qualifications to run it in that center. So yes, all property transfers now. Absolutely. I mean, that's all negotiable.
The contingent upon, we always have to keep the city leasing.
Af- absolutely. I mean, it's as simple as the city get the one year. Reoccurring without, without anybody having it activated. It doesn't need city at any time, from time to time, if nobody else's one. So just every year, it's over perpetuity. I've done that before. I mean, I, all the madness, we started out with ninety-nine million land deeds with the owners of the property under new. There's all kinds of.
Well, we are out of time. We're doing stuff by time. I want to thank you very much, Mike, for your time and your effort so far. I want to thank everybody that has come tonight, all your comments. And with that, I'm gonna make our entry to the council with that comment. Right? We're good. Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn? Someone say it? Oh, David said hi. Hi, Paul. We're good. Thank you, everyone.
I'm just gonna throw this in here.
Yeah, that's fine. You want my chicken scratch?